And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for attending the Night City Council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, camera in the council chambers set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. We'll note the picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand. Kathy, would you please call the law?
Mayor Skelly.
Here.
Counselor Delaboe. Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Here.
Counselor Reisch.
Here.
Counselor Scamperley.
Here.
Quorum present.
We do not have any presentations tonight. Uh, we do not have any constellations this evening. Not have any calls here. So this brings us to personal appearance at this time. Anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium. You have five minutes.
Hello, good evening, council and everyone. Um, my name is Margaret Hackett from the city of Augsburg. A shout out first to all faithful employees of the city of Augsburg. And I'll leave that right there. There are two things on my list for tonight, the first of which is legacy. And I know that you've heard me bring that up before, but it really is something that, I think is really important in general, but certainly pertains here. Merriam Webster definitions include legacy being something transmitted by or received from an ancestor or predecessor, or from the past. And the example that they used was, um, the war left a legacy of pain and suffering, which is an interesting, um, example that that they used and pretty timely in terms of bringing it here. I've implored multiple times for you all to consider the legacy you're creating for your city, your family, and your associates. How many of you even have the have the word family or the phrase family values on your business pages? Quite a few, I would say. Or your families. Is what you're allowing this very day supportive of your own legacy mission? You shouldn't have to think long and hard about that. Second, quoting, um, an employee who, um, in a high-level position said, "People are people. I know that. Listen, I tell the staff all the time, we get paid for restraint. That's the bottom line. There's no excuse. There's no exception to the rule." I guess that's what made it okay for, um, the same employee to admonish a counselor last week about professionalism. But, and I have written here a trigger warning, I am going to clean up what I actually have written, but if anybody wants me to fill in the beeps, I will happily do that. Boy. Which is, should be a beep. What the bleep is going on here? Holy bleep, did you attend or watch the meeting last week? I mean, the darn arguing, the bleep arguing that occurred that took center stage. You sure as heck allowed a lot of offensive language and behavior by a subordinate. No order called, or was it? I was so taken aback by the language of the person who preached restraint with no exception that I may have missed it. But holy beep, there was a bunch of beeping offensive language flying, which is an embarrassment. Um, I originally planned to say the words, but I realized that there are people who, you know, there might be people who were just as offended offended as I was, or even, or youngsters who, um, might be hearing this, but it was an embarrassment and you all know what I'm talking about. And I strongly, strongly demand that something be done about it. In fact, I'm kind of hoping tonight that, uh, we hear that there's some executive session after the meeting. Thank you.
Anyone remotely?
The first individual is registered as Greg McNamara, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great. Uh, first thing I'd like to talk about tonight is, uh, an article I read this afternoon about the firefighters having to supposedly pay back money the city thinks that they asked, or Stephen Jelly thinks that the city accidentally paid them. The whole deal of a city manager and this new awesome, uh, group of employees you got handling the city finances should have known this shortly after you came into your job position. I mean, let's be real, you went through everything with a fine tooth comb, so didn't the mayor supposedly? And, uh, the fourth, you guys are just known this in this now, a week before Jelly's gone? And now you're saying people are gonna have to pay back money? That's hilarious. I'll tell you what, I don't have main employees on the books every now and then. A fellow needs a little help, a helping hand, you know? I've had some help and I'll tell you what, if I told them I overpaid them on accident years later, that they owed me money back, they'd probably punch me in the jaw. I would never even consider that. You guys claimed it was 311,000 or something, this cost to taxpayers? What do you think this legal debt is gonna cost if you guys really think you're gonna ask them for that money back? I mean, you gotta, you gotta just be completely nimble to think something like that. It's ridiculous. I'd like to let everyone know, uh, from my last foil response, like I said at the last meeting, when I was expelled from City Hall in Augsburg City Court for a period of over two weeks by the police department and Stephen Jelly, uh, there's still no legal documentation. I appealed that, uh, to find out that there's still no documentation and that now the Committee on Open Meetings is gonna be, hopefully sent this to review it. If I would have known, if anyone that works for the city would have told me this a long time ago, it would have already been done. Uh, I already talked to the Committee on Open Meetings. I know you guys fully and completely violated my rights. Last time I spoke, I said, "Who do I go after?" Uh, I still haven't heard from anyone, so I do plan on starting this process in the next week. Also, I noticed recently, uh, I should say the name, but I won't, there's an Augsburg, uh, police officer who's been, uh, his name's really been slandered. He made a mistake. It could happen to anybody. And he's, you know, been put on leave without pay and this and that, and it's funny, uh, we just had it brought to the point by New York State that our chief here lied on two sworn court statements, which is actually double felony. Also, some other stuff has happened, so why are you guys?
The next individual is registered as Jason Bouchard, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. Mr. Bouchard. Mr. Bouchard, it appears your line is open. Can you hear me, sir? Would you like me to move on, Mayor? There's no other hands listed. His hand is raised again. Mr. Bouchard, can you hear me? Oh, it appears Counselor Fisher is not muted. I don't know if that's interfering or not. You're correct, sir. Mr. Bouchard, can you hear me? Understand, Mayor. Dear Mr. Jelly, please be advised, the New York State Senate will be vacating the premises located at 334th Street Basement, Augsburg, New York, 13669, honored before December 31st, 2022. Thank you for the courtesies and consideration extended to the New York State Senate during the term of this lease. Sincerely, Alejandra Polino Esquire, Secretary of the Site.
Uh, next we have our consent agenda, the claim related in general fund warrant number 19 dash 2022, the amount of 728,611.24 library warrant number 19 dash 22, amount of zero dollars. Capital Fund Warrant number 19 dash 2022, the amount of 454,294.58 and Community Development Fund Warrant number 19 dash 2022, the amount of 1,313,83 and Community Renewal Fund Warrant number 19 dash 2022, the amount of zero dollars, as audited, be and the same hereby are ordered paid, so move. Need a second.
One second.
I'll second it.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reisch?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Approved.
We have, uh, one appointment tonight, and I will make a motion to reappoint, reappoint Mandy Roberts Amo to the Pride Beautification Commission, term to begin October 24th, 2022, and end December 31st, 2023. I so move.
Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Powers? Counselor Reisch?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, our first item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a resolution to authorize the submission of a St. Lawrence County Water and Wastewater Infrastructure ARPA Grant Application, where St. Lawrence County has appro- apportioned approximately $3 million from its American Rescue Plan Act ARPA allocation to be used towards gap financing for water and wastewater improvements throughout St. Lawrence County. And whereas applications are due to the St. Lawrence County Planning Department by 4:00 PM on November 4th, 2022. And whereas Northern Border Regional Commission has provided $1 million, creating a, an $800,000 financing gap for the rehabilitation of the Main Street Pump Station. And whereas the city of Augsburg is desirous of seeking $400,000 towards the essential rehabilitation of the Main Street Pump Station to lessen the burden on city users and future rates for local and outside rate payers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Augsburg City Council supports the submission of this St. Lawrence County Water and Wastewater Infrastructure Application, seeking $400,000 for the rehabilitation of the Main Street Pump Station.
I'll move that.
One second.
Oops, sorry. Further resolved, I'm sorry.
Be it further resolved that the Augsburg City Manager or his designee is hereby authorized to submit said grant application and if received, to enter in, into any necessary contracts to accept and administer said grant in a timely manner, ensuring that all funds are expended by 2026 or repaid to the county in accordance with the application guidelines.
No.
And I'll second again.
Uh, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Just, uh, one quick question, Andrea, if I can. When did they appropriate the money, the 3 million, the county, how long ago was that?
The, this particular application opened in mid-September.
Okay, thank you. Is 400,000 the most we can apply for?
That's my recommendation to you. Um, there's, it's 3 million for all, that's what, that's what has been a portion for all applications. Um, it's essentially a 50-50 share of what the gap is, so it seems like a very reasonable request, given the scale of the project and the remaining gap. But there is no guidance on how much you can request.
Are, are there any other municipalities applying that we're aware of?
I'm not aware of what other municipalities are. I am sure they will have applications in excess of the 3 million dollars.
Okay, uh, thank you. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Reisch?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item is, will also be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
A resolution of the City Council introducing an Environmental Protection Agency cleanup application and providing for public notice and public hearing. Whereas the city of Augsburg desires to submit an application to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for brownfield cleanup funding. And whereas in accordance with grant submission guidelines, the city shall hold a public hearing to discuss the proposed application, potential sites, and alternative brownfield cleanup activities. And whereas, the community notification shall be published in the official city newspaper no later than 14 calendar days before the application is submitted, containing the following information. The city of Augsburg intends to submit an EPA cleanup application for properties constituting the former cheese plant 30 Main Street, Augsburg, New York. A copy of the draft application, including the ABCA, is provided for public review and comment in the planning office at City Hall, 334th Street, Augsburg, New York, 13669. The public can provide written comments addressed to the city clerk or attend the public hearing, which will allow for in-person and virtual participation on Monday, November 14th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Materials will be made available to members of the community with limited English proficiency and disabilities upon written request. Now therefore be it resolved that the Augsburg City Council shall hold a public hearing on the proposed grant application to be held in the City Council Chambers, City Hall, 334th Street, Augsburg, New York, on Monday, November 14th, sorry, the 14th day of November, 2022, at 6:00 PM. And be it further resolved that the city clerk give notice of such public hearing by publication in the official newspaper at least seven days before the hearing date of the notice setting forth the time and place and describing the proposed ordinance in summary form.
I'll move that.
Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reisch?
Yes.
Approved.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a change order number one for shade roller cleanup. Whereas the city is undertaking cleanup measures at the former shade roller manufacturing site in an effort to achieve the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, New York State DEC, restricted residential soil cleanup objectives. And whereas, to achieve a certificate of completion from the New York State DEC, additional metals contaminated soils and additional PCB contaminated soils in excess of the engineer's estimated quantities have been necessary to excavate. And whereas, change order number one includes additional work within both the shade roller main mill basement area where there are metals remediation and the former maintenance garage where there are PCBs. Now therefore be it resolved that the city manager or his designee is hereby authorized to execute change order number one with NRC East, a U.S. Ecology Corporation, in the amount of 95,926.25. Be it further resolved that the city controller is authorized to make necessary transfer from the general fund in the amount of 95,926.25 to the capital fund to carry out the financing of this change order. Be it further resolved that these funds shall be re- reallocated from 30 Main Street demolition to shade roller cleanup capital project account code HH dot eight six 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 point five one eight.
Second.
So I have a question. So the money is being moved from 30 Main Street in the resolution where we, we are submitting a grant to clean up 30 Main Street. Is that accurate?
Correct.
So if we haven't finished with 30 Main Street yet, where, where, why are we moving?
30 Main Street is the cheese plant.
Okay.
We did a resolution to award a contract, uh, for an amount that was inaccurate. Um, the price exceeds that dollar amount, and it exceeds what the city is able to finance uh, independent without outside sources.
Good.
So we are asking to reallocate a portion of those funds to this project, which will help bring this project to completion and as an alternative to funding the 30 Main Street cleanup, which is essentially, uh, demolition and remedial efforts. Uh, at the cheese plant, we will pursue funding through a cleanup application through EPA.
Okay, that sounds good. So that was money that we set aside was about 300,000, right?
192,600, I think. I think.
Okay, all right, thank you. Will 95,000 be enough? I mean, you know, recognizing that we, it was a cler- you know, not a clerical error, but a miscalculation of metals and PCBs and, and the soil there. I mean, are we looking to resolve this completely, unwillingly?
I don't know that it was so much an, a, an error on behalf of the engineers, um, but when you're dealing with remedial efforts, it's, it's always a little bit of a guess. It's, it's an educated guess. There are, uh, borings to back up what we are estimating in terms of quantities. What we did not expect and what we found is, um, when we removed the, the maintenance garage slab, which has the contamination of PCBs, for example. Um, we expected to find PCBs in the soil, the subsurface underneath that concrete slab, but we did not expect to find them in excess of two feet deep. Um, so, once the slab was removed, we removed the first six inches of soil, and it doesn't seem like very much, but when you're talking about large areas, that quantity adds up pretty quickly. Uh, instead of going down, the level of PCBs went up. Um, so if you were to go to the site now, you will find a stockpile of, of material that's sitting on site because it was excavated, but it was not budgeted to be disposed of. So, um, that's what this change order will address. And much the same with the, uh, main mill, which, where we're dealing with, with metals. Uh, so again, based on the borings, we asked, we, um, we removed the estimated quantities, but again, um, there are various metals. There's copper, there's, um, manganese, there's, there's a, an array of metals, and some went up and some went down. So we had to keep excavating, so again, that soil is, remains on site, hasn't been trucked off because that would put us outside of our contracted amount. So that is what this change order would address. I feel reasonably confident, but at the same time, we are still dealing with a brownfield. Um, the problem we're gonna run into now is this change order started out at 107, in excess of 173,000, which was not acceptable to the city. So we have worked with the DEC, we've worked with the contractor, and we've worked with our engineers to get this estimate as close to what we really expect to spend. But it's October, it's late October, and the contractor has subsequently had to demobilize to go do work on another site. So I don't know realistically if this work will get fully completed this, this calendar year, and if it doesn't, conceivably the cost could go up. But we've done a lot of work to get you this estimate to make sure that it is as close, uh, to reality as it can be.
I fully support the, uh, the, the effort to, to clean up the property. Would, would we be looking at any other remedial studies after the fact? Not really at a cost to us, though, I don't believe, would it?
So the goal is to get this, this work gets us to, the goal is to get us to a certificate of completion, uh, which would, which would give the city of Augsburg a release of liability. Um, it doesn't mean that a future developer won't go out there and never find any more contamination, but it would put us in an equal position to where we are at the Diamond National Site, um, which is, which is what we hope, where we want to be.
Thank you.
And all future work would then be, um, determined based on the reuse plan and would be, um, if additional work was needed, it would be the responsibility and obligation of the developer at that point in time.
One more question. I noticed on the NRC change order, it says, uh, "City will also pay D C and D disposal fees for this 95,000." Is that included in that 95,000?
Estimated quantities are.
Okay, good. And you know what? It just goes to show you how long this stuff takes. We started, uh, we were both on council together, 12 years ago. And here, we're still going at it, you know? Hopefully this is the final leg, right? Is that what it looks like?
That's the goal.
Okay.
But with restrictions and a plan, and it's not like it's clean and you can just start building, there's.
Right.
Yeah.
So at the end of this, we, we hope to have a certificate of completion. It will come with a site management plan, just like Diamond. Um, it is restricted residential, which is the highest level of cleanup short of no restrictions. So it does allow for the greatest flexibility in reuse, consistent with community planning objectives, but it does not allow for and would not allow for single-family detached housing.
You'd have to have.
Additional cleanup would be required.
You'd have to have a developer who's willing to work with DEC, uh, implementing the plan and oversight and things like that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reisch?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Public Works Director, Shane Brown.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number nine to the contract for the wastewater treatment plant capital improvement project contract with Jet Industries Incorporated. Whereas the city council authorized the city manager to enter into a contract with Jet Industries Incorporated for the wastewater treatment plant capital improvement project for a total contract sum included contingency not to exceed And whereas, the revisions to the contract documents are as follows. Double leaf hatch at the control building annex deletion, number two, primary distribution box, DB1, interior coating deletion, control building and annex railing replacement deletion, digester stairs to the roof replacement deletion, cover-based tile replacement with sealed floors, Hoosier magnetic water line relocation deletion, unit price bid items reallocations. Whereas the city bonded for 49 million for the project, and the base on the current project budget is 43,220,164 and the amount of 2,418,794.50 remains available. Now therefore it be resolved that the city manager is hereby authorized to exceed, execute the change order number nine as the project costs decrease of 502,778.76 to the existing contract between the city of Augsburg and Jet Industries Incorporated for the total contract sum not to exceed 43,220,164.
I'll move that. Second. So, uh, question, uh, these deletions, we, we don't need to do that, or city staff can do that?
Uh, they didn't need to be done.
Okay.
The hatch, I'm assuming they didn't need it, there was a big savings in the way they routed the box. They thought they didn't have enough room, but when they got in there, they got enough room to put a 90 in. Which was a huge savings, and it's just other small things like the rails and stuff were. Which was a huge savings and it's just other small things like the rails and stuff were in really good shape going up to the thing, so they decided to keep.
They're not that old, is it, really?
I think the one might not have been because I think that was a di-chesser that the top was replaced by ten to fifteen years ago.
Yeah, right, I think those are council.
Yeah.
So council, what we're doing now is starting to draw this project to a close. We've asked uh the engineer and the contractor to work pretty decisively and sequentially here over the next couple of months. There are other change orders coming. Uh, so what I asked them to do was rally up all these credits so the council can start to see what the money is available. So there's about two hundred and thirty-six thousand left in contingency in the project now. Add this five hundred thousand to it, will give you a little over seven hundred thousand dollars. And then Shane will be presenting as they're coming available, the things that they have to add to the project or recommending to to add. So uh so there there's other other stuff coming. This is just, I'm just trying to give a sequential. What I didn't want them to do is submit a credit order along with the change order, and then you're trying to decipher what's in, what's out. So these are, these are things that we can easily verify. We didn't have to do them, they weren't good, the price, you know, was correct, that they're crediting us, etc. So we're gonna keep working that to make sure there isn't any more credits to derive. And then as the additional recommended work items come in, again, those can all be easily analyzed by staff. Uh, we have conveyed on each and every occasion with the engineer and the contractor, you know, council's desire not to spend any more money than is in here for the project. So um, excuse me, we'll um, we'll stand by for the next uh set of reports. Still working hard uh to get the project, you know, fully completed, not substantial complete or any other contract language. You know, everybody done it off the site, but.
Thank you.
The other change orders you're expecting are gonna be at a cost savings to the city?
No, I don't, I I there may be one more credit, uh, counselor powers coming through with with some miscellaneous things depending on where things end up, but the the next ones you'll see will be uh will be recommended. Items that were left out of the contract, uh, some time and material work. I I again, I'm, I don't, we don't have them, you know, we've asked them to to get preparing those. Uh, we asked for this to get put out now because they had that information now instead of lumping it all together. But um, I I expect by the next council meeting, we should have the first of the other recommendations coming through, things that you've been, so. But there's no, nobody's dreamed up any new ideas or anything. It's a matter of we forgot insulation wasn't specified in a on an exterior pipe and etc. There's, you know, there's a handful of a handful of items. I think we're also seeing a little bit too of um, you know, a contract that was designed and spec, you know, four or five years ago. If you're paying the bills on that today, everything is costing you much more money than you than you estimated for sure. So I think this is the point now where as we're nearing the end of contract, the contractor is gonna, you know, just ultimately be looking at every single cost and trying to find a way to to charge for those things because they they have to have exceeded costs. There's no way not to, everything is costing more.
There appears pretty much this laundry, this list of seven items won't have any impact on the annual site usage in any way coming forward.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Rees?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to old business, and we will begin with city manager Stephen Jolly.
Uh, nothing substantive. Um, a comptroller will send through some information before the week's over. We um, we're creating a ambassador to work on a chart that gives you a little more detail we've been looking for. Ones, one is the month that the tax was collected for. But more important, what I'm trying to make sure that council has is exactly what we actually received or were credited for in each particular month. What I'm afraid is gonna happen now is this chart that we have that has those months where we're doing the, call it the true up or the synchronization. You've got these, you've got big dips. So it looks like you only received sixty thousand for a month, which isn't true. It's just you receive sixty thousand because they credited from a month that was way up high because the algorithm estimated too much. So what what we're working through now is getting you a chart that shows the actual. So next year, you're not sitting here going, geez, what happened? How come we took a big dip in February or we took such a high in in October? So I think we'll have those, it'll give you a much better uh read on where it comes in, why it comes in, and how offset some of the, you know, some of the monies are that that come in. At the end, though, what this is ultimately doing is just trying to to paint you the picture so you can see the money that we're now making um, you know, month after month, post the agreement with the county as by way of how to project uh the sales tax revenue for twenty twenty-three. That's probably the most important point. So you'll see where that that projection is coming from.
Any other?
Hey, you've got the ARPA update in front of you. Um, again, the project uh amounts are are really starting to tally up now. So total of forty-three projects uh for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, uh either paid out or committed. Uh, we're at the level two now uh income brackets, and I think this this is the total of those projects. So once we get the those through final approval and get contractor confirmation, uh, there's just a handful left in the last income bracket uh that we'll be processing. And that'll be all three income brackets with that first level of critical work, heating, ventilation, electrical, safety, handicap access type of type of work. So I'm a little bit uh short of the number of projects that I think uh we'd all like to see on here, but you can see the the money tallies up pretty fast on these. But I think, again, once once we we got the system in place and got things moving, it's it's gone. And the contractors have really picked up the pace um and getting the projects completed. So mostly everything in income bracket one, um, I think you can see that there's just uh one water heater project, uh, one furnace project and two home improvements, they're they're not complete. Everything else is has been done and paid out, so.
What was the maximum that we allowed an individual to apply for?
Uh, people, people could apply for whatever they wanted to. The maximum grant was was five thousand dollars on the first income bracket.
Uh, last meeting to uh Ms. McDonald, I asked if you've gotten hold of her, have you got a hold of her since?
You're talking about claims?
Yeah.
How's, it's on the uh docket for executive session.
Okay.
Uh, so I'd like to do now um on a demolition update, uh, this is a presentation you've seen before, but I'd like to have Andrea come back up and just go through, we've just about completed uh the scheduled demolition. Uh, the council funded this year, and I just wanted her to walk through each of the projects you've got before and after pictures. If you had any questions, again, there's no action for council meeting here. This is just an update on what's been done to date with the demolition work that was approved.
So as the city manager just indicated, um, for anybody attending virtually, I believe this is available in the handout section. Um, and hard copies have also been made available to those attending in person. So several months ago, back in May, I believe, we uh council approved a contract with with diversified and to do seven demolitions. We we did add add on one, so we did a total of eight demolitions. The the last one being four twenty-nine Kaya Street. Uh, and that one was added because you might recall we have an infrastructure issue there. Um, it was a property that was acquired through the June foreclosure, uh, property foreclosure. And um, that demolition will allow us to address uh an a sewer infrastructure issue there that that runs through the property. So we've completed the seven contractual demolitions, the first being, uh, they're not necessarily in order of completion, but the first one in your packet is seven Brown Street. Um, these were all completed under an area-wide variance that was um, that was granted through the Department of Labor to allow us to do controlled demolitions with asbestos in place. Um, we did surveys on the majority of these properties and they all did have asbestos. Uh, so some of them had triable. Um, and so doing the controlled demolitions with this uh with this variance, which is the first time we've ever done this, was a much more cost-effective way to do it, and it is in place until uh May twenty-third of twenty twenty-three. So any demolitions that we do um from now through May of twenty twenty-three can go through this process. And it's just a quicker way uh and a little bit more cost-effective for for the city. Each slide has the breakdown of costs, both in terms of what we estimated them to be and what they turned out to be. Um, on average, the eight demolitions cost about twenty-eight thousand dollars. In fact, twenty, closer to twenty-nine, twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars per unit if you average the costs out uh overall. Um, we now have eight lots that we will be bringing to you in the very near future um for to declare surplus, with the exception, I should say, of Kaya Street, which we do have to do a little bit of work on before we can declare that surplus. Um, overall, we spent two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, a hundred and ninety-two of that went to the contractor diversified. We also paid Paradigm who performed asbestos air monitoring and then the disposal costs, which are paid directly to Dank through their community development program at a reduced rate. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have. We did end up uh just about thirty-five hundred dollars over estimated costs, which are primarily attributed to the demolition of the former Club Eighteen Twelve at the corner of of Lake and Main.
When do you think we'd hold a public hearing, our public auction, to get rid of those eight?
Um, we are tracking a a larger bulk auction in the spring, which would include the surplus or not surplus, it would include the parcels uh that we acquired in June that are currently kind of wrapping up uh evictions. So we would do.
It didn't sell at the last auction?
And those.
There was quite a few, I think.
Uh, there's a handful.
These the asbestos. Not large volumes of asbestos in these. I mean, you mentioned some, obviously, I'm wondering, were there inspections done after the fact or during the job that were?
There's air monitoring done throughout the demolition process.
I see we, I see we are charged for, charged for the air monitoring costs, six hundred and fifty dollars a day.
Yep, and there's a clearance report for each property.
Very, all right, that's that's, thank you, that's what I wanted.
Yep.
Does anyone else have any old business?
Thank you, Andrea.
Mayor, I'd like to ask uh council, if we could, as a matter of old business, to modify the special agenda for the November first meeting to include an executive session uh to be able to discuss and then act after the executive session uh on the city interim city manager.
Do you looking for consent, just consensus?
Yeah, you already have a um, you already have an agenda posted, so to add to the agenda, it's just cleaner if council approves the addition to the to the agenda.
You need a resolution or just consensus?
Motion to amend.
I'll move the.
And a second, please.
Hi. You're looking to add an executive session to the next city?
To November first special.
Special meeting for the budget.
Sure.
To discuss the appointment of a city manager?
Interim, interim. Then you can act on the recommendation after.
Uh, Steve, can you mute yourself, please?
Yeah, yeah.
So um, I guess we have a resolution for an executive session. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Ken.
I'm sorry, Kathy, just one other quick question. That'll include a list, the list that the council has sent to you related to?
This is just for interim Mike, so basically when I'm done, you have somebody who's immediately in charge.
Do we have that person?
So, so we'll discuss, we'll discuss recommendations tonight in the executive session, but I want, they'll need to act on it next next meeting.
I think we should, I don't think we need to act on it, right? There there's, there's gonna have to be an interview process, which hasn't taken place, and I think we should all be a part of.
For that gap in between.
Regardless whether it's interim or an appointment or, uh, you know, Monday through Friday, for the month of December, I don't care what it is. You know, but ultimately, I think it needs to boil down to a process.
You, I mean, you really don't have enough time is is a problem. This will just be to cover you until you determine what you want to do longer.
There's time, there's plenty of time. We have the capability to be able to do it in-house at this point. We've done it before, which prior to your hiring, which is, you can do it again.
Which is what we're talking about, doing it in-house.
I just want to clarify. Yeah, let's just get straight to it now, folks, because otherwise I was gonna say.
You don't have an assistant city manager.
We'll talk about it, you didn't come back.
You don't have an assistant city manager designation, so this will designate someone in the in the absence.
Well, that's up to us.
No, no, it's not, assistant city manager is up to the city manager.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Rees?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to new business, and we will begin with city manager Stephen Jolly.
Uh, so mayor, tonight in executive session, I'll update council on the lengthy process that's taken to process all the claims through our processor, insurance company, and legal. I know it's been frustrating for some members of the public, but it has been a long process due to the number of claims uh that we had. So I'll brief council sign on the status, staff's recommended action on those, and then people will start hearing, you know, soon after uh once council gets our decision twenty's tab.
Any other new business? And this brings us to items for discussion. I think Steve has some.
Yeah, so two things, uh, one is I know there's a a lot of this circulated from the CSA union uh talking to the library and and demanding recognition of the city's responsibilities with the library's contract with its employees. Just want to make clear, I sent it to council so everyone understands, again, we we are not part of that contract. They can name the city a thousand times in there if they like. We're not part of the contract, there's no obligation for the city to recognize that. Uh, also, in regards to the Remington, a similar deal, uh, we don't, there's no employees there anymore, but the same stands. The city has no obligation to those contracts that they didn't sign. Um, and also at this point, um, again, I'm, I know of you been contacted, some of you individually. Uh, the Remington remains uh delinquent in the twenty twenty amount that was promised to pay the city by two different administrations. We are working diligently to collect that money. Don't really know what the the roadblock is. They seem to want to communicate with members of council, which is certainly their prerogative, but uh there is an amount owed for twenty twenty that that needs to be collected so we can move on to twenty twenty-two business.
Any other items for discussion?
Um, I have one on today's, I was today's IFF where we're repealing the hazard pay. Um, I just, I was surprised, eh, the first time I heard about it was in the news. And second of all, I went back and I was reviewing the minutes because I knew we had voted on where at one point we wanted to reduce it to three dollars an hour, and that resolution was defeated. I'm just, I don't, and then Powers made a comment that it's council's decision to make the decision. The resolution was defeated, so I just, how did we get to today?
I I don't know what resolution you're speaking of, Counselor Kennedy, I don't think we ever had a resolution.
It was an item for action on the May twenty-third minutes.
I don't recall, I'll see, but I don't recall we're having a discussion about hazard pay. We, the current way the contract reads, we reduce hazard pay by increasing or decreasing the amount of staffing. Again, it's personnel matter, I'm happy to discuss with council in executive session, this is a.
It's in the media.
Our section, what's that?
It's in the media. You're released.
Has anyone complained about it?
Well, I mean, it's information that was publicly released.
So the city, the city, the city police, we have another illegal secure, job security contract uh based on our continued litigation and working through the the uh the defunct issues with the IFF contract.
We've got a legal opinion on that?
Do.
From?
Attorney.
Mr. Sweeney?
Can we, you provided that, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is there, is there an issue?
Yeah, I think what, I think it was trying, I think what people are trying to say is is that, you know, we read about it in the paper today.
Yeah, like.
So the council didn't vote on it and to take that action. So how was that decided?
Uh, so I, I don't know, I need council approval when I discover that something is illegal and the city's paying out funds that shouldn't be paid out. Uh, if if council, if council disagrees with my decision, they certainly can can voice that concern, but I don't think that's true. And we've been working, Council Rees, on these issues with the firefighter contract for over two years. This is just the the next in the process. We've been, we've been working through the issue with five-man minimum staffing. We now have a fairly significant amount of of information available to us on this that that shifts the burden to uh to this section of the contract.
Which is the subject matter of the contract, and it's the same subject matter that was discussed on May twenty-third, item one. Yeah, it's in the minutes. It's in the minutes. I I just said it was out in the public, he he put it out in the public. He put out a press release this morning, it's in the news before we came here. We as council didn't get any heads up, we didn't know it was. We didn't know it was coming until I saw a press release this morning. And, you know, I mean, I believe- Excuse me, I believe Counsel Reach had made a comment that the fact that he wasn't comfortable in moving forward in that endeavor to go from six to $3, or based off the fact that we had a pending arbitration case out there, that we still have yet to receive a decision, which is, which is contractual in nature.
That's a completely different matter than the daily minimum staffing issue.
Hazard pay has a direct effect on the staffing level and, and, on a shift. Hazard pay is directly related to shift work and staffing levels on a shift.
I appreciate your opinion, Counsel, but I beg to differ in the interest of defending the city who is broke right now, continuing to pay out the $200,000, $300,000 is a bad deal.
I understand that. I understand that. You, you've, you've pontificated that numerous times.
I have.
And we're well aware of that. Everybody here is well aware of that.
They are.
But ultimately, at the end of the day, it is a staffing level because you don't get to hazard duty pay unless you drop below a contractual agreed number of firefighters.
On duty or employed by the city? I'd be interested in your opinion on that.
I believe by shift.
By employed or on duty? Because their contract specifically-
What's the difference?
Their contract doesn't call for hazard pay for the number of people on duty. It calls for hazard pay by the number of people we employ, which I think you can agree is a job security clause, correct? I think the last-
I'd have to take a deep dive into the contract. I don't know if that's accurate.
I think that's my job, and I've done that.
Well, how did we miss it the first time? How, how, since 2020, since your arrival, have we missed this?
We, we didn't miss it. We just got done working through the first safety job security clause issue. So we're, I mean, it's just sequential. It's the next issue to tackle.
I disagree.
If, if Council doesn't want us to take on issues that-
I think, I think it made clear, I think the last time we talked about these issues, it was, you know, you need to check with Council when making a significant decision like that, where it involves litigation against a union.
Is there litigation, Counsel Reach?
Ultimately, it's gonna end up there. They're gonna grieve it. You're gonna go through the process.
All I've, all I've, all I've done is I've stopped what I believe is illegal payments coming out of city coffers. That's my job. I have a fiduciary duty to do such, Counsel Powers. If, if Council would like to talk about this in the executive session, have me continue paying money out. That's certainly your decision. It's, it's your decision. But it's currently my decision, when I see money being paid out inappropriately, to stop that. And no one's complaining. Does someone complain? I'm not aware of any complaints.
No, I'm just curious how it all came about. You know, all of a sudden, boom, we get hit with this hazard duty thing in the media.
Two, two and a half years, two and a half.
Would there be litigation, would there be litigation to go back and ask them to pay, or they just expect that they're just gonna pay?
No.
I don't know. They've not spoken to us on the matter.
So your, your decision is, your decision is to stop the payments and to somehow go after the back payments?
Well, when someone's overpaying you, you've got-
My decision is to cease the payments now because I believe it is 100% illegal for us to be paying in this manner. My second decision is to seek the legal guidance, which we've asked for, to determine if we can re, if the state can be reimbursed for that money. We'll, we'll get an answer on both.
And we'll get, we'll get legal guidance. The Council will, and we'll discuss it at a later date.
Again, Counsel, I, I'm not, it's action that, that I believe is well within my purview to take. If the, if the union chooses to grieve this, the grievance has come to the city manager, not the city council.
With all due respect to your opinion, that's, and that's all well and good. But, I mean, ultimately, I, I'd never move forward without a legal opinion, and very seldom do we actually get one, other than the one time we, our attorney addressed us. But it wasn't our city attorney that we have on retainer, but it was one of the many attorneys that we have on retainer. But with that being said, I think contractually and legally, and I believe it is per shift, that it needs to be vetted strongly by the law firm with questions from us or from whoever's handling the situation prior to moving forward.
Just, do you have knowledge that the union disagrees with my position?
Based on the statement I saw in the news tonight, yeah.
I, I don't have any firsthand knowledge of them disagreeing with my-
Yeah, just like I have my firsthand knowledge from the news, you're gonna get your-
Other than your statement that came out, I didn't have any knowledge of it until about 5:15 this afternoon. Well, I apologize this morning when you issued the press release.
We have a process for this meeting, and it hasn't happened yet. There's no grievance filed.
Wow. Now, let me, I have another question. So did you at one point deny hazard pay to the firefighters at one point previous to this endeavor?
I don't recall. I don't, I don't believe so.
I think that's what ultimately came up from the six to the three for the May 23rd item one resolution that came forward. I believe that initially that was one of the contractual grievances. And I, my, my recollections, correct? And correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
I could be.
Yeah.
But going forward, that there was a scheduled perb hearing that was canceled prior to date, a couple of days prior to that, where you lifted the fact that you weren't paying them hazard duty pay. That's why I'm asking you, have you ever really, have you ever stopped paying them the hazard duty pay after they fell below six and five?
I don't, I don't believe they ever didn't get the hazard pay in accordance with the contract. They will, they will not get it now unless Council gives direction, otherwise. It is-
Until we get a legal opinion, I'm not in favor of it. And we hear from Mr. Sweeney or whoever handling our labor disputes.
I would, I would recommend Council see, you know, legal advice from the city attorney, whether you have the authority to tell me I can't do my job.
We're not saying you can't do your job. Nobody's saying you can't do your job. We're just suggesting, we want information. We want information as well, that's all. We're not suggesting you're not doing your job.
Can we have him at the-
Nobody came in here and said you're not doing your job.
You should ask for legal opinion.
Can we have him at the November 1st executive session? I mean, we already have-
And a nickel for every time we've asked for legal opinions in this room.
It's not up to me.
I'd have 50 cents.
Well, if you had four votes, you'd get it, but you haven't.
I would like to make a motion to add, to request the city attorney be here at our November 1st executive session.
I'll second that.
Can I just understand this first? What's the point of having the attorney there?
So we can ask some questions regarding-
Where this derived from? Where it came from?
Right, like we, like, I just feel like he's saying he has a legal opinion. Well, we haven't seen, I, have you got it?
So you're asking for-
The legal aspect of the contract, or his press release.
Right, Sweeney or whoever is giving you this legal opinion, I would like-
Not our city attorney.
Yeah, Sweeney, whoever did the legal opinion, I would like to hear from
We'd like to hear from that on this matter.
the actual attorney, whether he attends virtually like he, like we had do that one time. I think that that would be appropriate.
That's fine. Can I call?
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Powers?
Just so I'm clear, we're asking for her.
A motion by Counselor Kennedy to request that the city attorney attend the executive-
Not the, the attorney that gave, was it Sweeney that gave you the opinion on the IFF? For Sweeney to be here, please. Sorry.
So it would be Attorney Sweeney?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Second by Counselor Powers.
I'm a yes.
Yes, sir. Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Sure, why not?
Counselor Kennedy? Yes, approved.
Hello, I think it's all known, we have been here before. I'm a little confused by what you're doing with the flooding claims. I spoke with Scott Mason from PMA who has called me, and he told me that you are denying all claims claiming it's an act of God. This was in July. We're going into the end of October. Rain, an act of God. An inactive, inadequate sewage system, God had nothing to do with that. You guys have talked about that ever since the flooding. Mike, you even said at the meeting on the 25th, this has been an ongoing problem for years, that the city got a grant for the backflow protectors, whatever they are, back then, and that you put a lot of them in on Patterson Street after the project because of this. Mainly before the project. Very few act. I've got that clip at the house. If you want to, wait a minute, I can get my phone and play it for you. Yeah, well, I know what I heard on the thing. You know, it's, uh, it's ridiculous that this should, the city, the city people here should be held responsible for this. People lost a lot, and this has been an ongoing thing, and you know it. The city knew it. If it wasn't an ongoing thing, why years ago did they get a grant for these backflow protectors? I mean, act of God, no, Mr. Jelli. God didn't go into my cellar and send six inches of shit into my basement. You know, it's a city responsibility for the sewer. The city, and you sat here at that meeting that night, and how many times told people, file for reimbursement, file for reimbursement on seven news, if I'm not mistaken, when they interviewed you. We told the people to file for reimbursement. News articles. Come on, do the right thing. Do the right thing. Nobody asked for this. I was in my basement at four o'clock in the morning, and I just about, I watched a shampoo bottle float across my basement floor. The other ladies here, they've got considerable damage. Other people in town. Do the right thing. Please do the right thing for once, please.
Mayor? Yes. Just, just for the record, I, I don't know, her information is likely not fault of Mike, or we, there's no decision been made. We've, we've told the Council, we'll, we'll make, we'll make those tonight. She's, um, so there's no, there's no decision. Council will ultimately make the decisions. Just completely, complete false, Mayor. It's completely false. Do you own, do you own property? Are you a claimant?
Yes, I am a claimant because I lost stuff in my basement.
I don't think you are. I don't recall it. But I also don't recall it, nobody has told anybody any claim to try.
I'm not permitted to answer questions at a meeting, I'm sorry.
I never filed a front-
You say never filed one?
And here's an excellent example of why you folks need to do the right thing. Somebody who's supposed to have restraint being snarky just to, to what, to what, to what a resident feels is a significant issue. I mean, from what I've heard, it's a significant issue. She is presenting it as a significant issue and did not deserve that disrespect at all. One more thing, just to add to my list of please do the right thing. And as far as, Nicole brought up that article or the statement that, that we also saw kind of late today, and it, it was more than just facts as you see them. There were digs, and that's so inappropriate for there to be digs by the city manager of our, our firefighters, of somebody who is in the union as a firefighter. It, that's just inappropriate. Because of all those reasons that I said tonight and all the reasons that have been brought up many, many times before, I just say, please do the right thing. And when it comes to an interim city manager, that's a decision that city council makes, and city council is our boss. I mean, we're city council's boss, and as one of the residents, I'm saying it needs to be city council. And hopefully you'll be able to put out some of the CVs of people you're considering and maybe be open to some input by residents who are concerned about this. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. It's nice to be here in person, so the mayor can't tell Kathy to hang the phone up on me. I just heard Mr. Jelli tell this woman that what she stated was false and told the Council it was false about what an insurance person told her or whatnot. I'm sure Shane would agree with me. Plumbing's not that complicated. I know plumbing, hot on the left, cold on the right, shit flows downhill, and payday's on Friday. If the sewer, if the sewer pipe grade is higher than, than the three inch or four inch old cast iron main or, or new PVC or whatever's ran from the basement to the sewer, if that amount of water's higher, it's just the amount of equilibrium. It's a matter of equilibrium. It's very simple. It's, it's gonna back up. So it's a flow issue, it's a grade issue. I, I don't want to talk about that anymore. As far as the situation with the firefighters and this insanity, this talk about them having to pay money back, the city manager just stated tonight, it's been two years or since 2020 since he started in the making, since this decision was made. I wonder how much time the city attorney spent on this and what that would have cost over a period of two years to figure this answer out. That's, that's interesting. Also, I'd like to point out that a council member who has, who has really supported cuts to government funded jobs, and you know who you are, you're, you're retired from a government job. I'm sure you're, you know, your, your retirement, your pension, whatever you got. I grew up in your neighborhood. I hung out with your son. Your whole life is, was built off of government money. So to do that type of thing is kind of extremely hypocritical move in my eyes. I'll move on from that. When I called in earlier, I said some stuff and I was cut off about the, the chief of police here and, and another officer who was recently, in, in my opinion, charged pretty harshly or treated harshly for what happened to him. He, he wasn't willing to violate my rights and arrest me for coming to City Hall for Stephen Jelli, and it, it really makes me wonder, is that why he came down on this guy so hard? I ain't friends with him, I don't know him from Adam. And the next thing, the next thing, Mike, well, I'm reclaiming my time from earlier you denied me about. How, how's that sound? How's that sound? You talk about however you want. His article just said Jen Stevenson and David Price's name on the news today. Oh, well, so you're allowed to do it if you want to do it, but not anyone else. You're a corrupt dictator, is what you are, okay? Little Hitler, you're real funny. Welcome to communist Augsburg, New York, everybody. Hey, Steve, is what I said about you illegally kicking me out of City Hall, is that false? Chief Kearns, you, you booted me out of here. You told me that I would be arrested for trespassing if I came in this building. Is that true or false, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Penny Curfine. I'm director of the library. I want the community to hear the letter that we wrote out on behalf of the union from the library and the Remington members. City manager Jelli referred to it. I'm not sure all of Council has seen it or heard it, but I wanted the community to hear it. Ms. Curfine, this letter is to give you a reminder that the CSEA's contract with you states that retirees will have health insurance upon retirement by the city of Augsburg that covers a specific group of your employees and it states. Article 10, health insurance. Health insurance is provided through the city of Augsburg. B, health insurance will be provided to all full-time employees. C, the city will pay 100% of the cost of health insurance of the employees together with 100% of the health insurance for any of his dependents included in his plan, except that all employees will make a copayment of $10 per payroll period for health insurance and major medical deductibles of $200 per individual and $400 per family will apply. Co-insurance premium deductions will be made from the employee's pay each pay period. The prescription plan effective January 1st, 2013 is as follows. Employees should pay a co-pays for all non-maintenance drugs as follows. $5 for generic, $20 for preferred, and $35 for the non-preferred brands, and mandatory generic substitution where available. Employees shall pay co-pays for all maintenance drugs as follows. $10 for generic, 44 preferred, and 55 for non-preferred drugs per 90-day supply. It will be a $200 cap per individual and a $400 cap per family per year on all co-pays. The city will pay 100% of the cost of health insurance for retired employees together with 35% of the cost for any qualified dependents of retirees. Employees hired after January 1, 2007 upon retirement will be responsible for 50% of their individual health insurance costs and 65% of their family coverage. Best regards, Kevin Felix Bromley, who is the union rep for CSEA. And I'd just like to point out that this section has been in the contract for my employees and the lot, Remington employees for over 30 years. And the city has received this contract every year that we've done it. Thank you.
How many employees do we have in both those entities total? Library and Frederick. Two? Two full-time employees?
Library, none, none in the Remington.
None in there.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Lottisir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I have been here tonight to listen to the city council. Unfortunately, with the age that I'm at, I cannot hear most of what was said tonight. I would really appreciate it seeing that I took time out of my life to be here tonight to be able to hear what each of you have to say. It's very important. We have a lot of very important decisions that need to be made. And I'll only say one other thing. I truly believe in decorum and Robert's rules of order. And I would really greatly appreciate seeing that there are gentlemen here and a lady that you practice those precepts. Please, we're all here to make this place a better place to live in. All of us. And when somebody comes up to speak, I feel it's very important that you listen. And you respect the individual who is speaking just as I am speaking to you respectfully. I think that is something that's very important and unfortunately is lost today. Please think about what I'm saying. And please use a microphone. Thank you.
Uh, just a quick question. We're reading in the paper, the advertisement for the city manager and the city comptroller. Uh, who, what staff member wrote, wrote the, you know, the, uh, the article? Steve, do you write that? I didn't think it'd answer. But I'm, it was pretty interesting here, okay? The next city manager will be expected to be a team-oriented, accessible leader who entrusts and appreciates the city staff for their contributions. Building positive relationships with community organizations and other service providers will be a primary activity. The city manager is expected to be a leader in economic development with local organizations in New York State. Attending events and being active in this community will be a key to their success. Well, I guess what we just witnessed in the last couple beers, it hasn't returned to success. All right. You guys proved this, I would imagine. I hope you stick by it instead of playing games. All right. Um, I've heard many times tonight about illegal money. Well, you know, the taxpayers in this community paid a salary for a year for somebody that didn't live in the community, okay? And was never in his office. So you talk about illegal? So no, why is it enough? I'm not being disrespectful. I'm making a comment that's true when you know it. You don't like the truth, Skelly.
I have one more thing, sorry. I forgot to ask it during discussion. Do you mind? Um, I sent an email last Friday on our anticipated audit for this past year and a couple of questions. Do you have the answers to those?
Just trying to recall quickly.
It was, have we been, received payment or been reimbursed from the FRB for the purchase of the fire truck, retirement buyouts and the lease program we started? Where are we at with this year's audit? I went through the minutes and the minutes, the city manager stated the following. February 28th, 2022, audit anticipated June or July, just like last year. June 13th, 2022, audit underway soon. July 25th, 2022, audit expected mid to late August. I was wondering if the delay is on our part or if this is on our audit firm's part?
Uh, FRB, uh, money we've not received yet, we're working every day with the state to, uh, to get it passed through.
On, on none of, on the buyouts, the lease or the fire truck?
Lease, uh, vehicles we receive, we bill them. That, that, that money flows. The fire truck and the firefighter buyouts is not coming through yet. We're anticipating before the end of the year on the fire truck. On the buyouts for the firefighters, the fire truck, uh, is likely gonna be sometime after the first.
So that money will go into the general fund?
And as, as far as the audit goes, uh, we, we do have some, we've got some documentation. We owe the auditor yet just because of the short staffing in the office. We're, we, we are behind on getting the information to them.
When do we anticipate having the audit?
I don't know. I, I mean, hopefully soon, obviously we're working to meet the budget deadlines.
How, how much documentation? We were expecting this. I mean, typically we get this by July. I mean, we've, we've got a full-time comptroller. We've got somebody that's in the city hall every week. That should have been a priority.
It, it is, it is a priority along with all the other priorities. The office is short-staffed, two people, so.
I mean, just last year with their deficiencies and things like that, I just was reading through everything and um, I think that this is something I would have liked to see done prior to your departure.
When's the audit coming? Did I miss that?
We don't know. We're missing everything. They don't have the proper paperwork to our auditor yet, so it's not happening anytime soon from what I'm gathering.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, it'll, it'll be done before the year's over. We're just, again, there's, there's a lot of priorities for a lot of people to do and you didn't have the audit before the last city manager and comptroller walked out to do it either, but.
I know and you criticized them.
They were, they were, they were criticized quite strongly.
What deficiencies are referred to last year's audit? The same ones that were there for 20 years maybe.
No, the deficiencies that stated in checks and balances as far as payroll and things like that.
I don't think it's criticism coming from here either. I mean, we're rolling into a budget session. We don't have the financials for the last year. So it's, uh, I mean, we have financials, but we don't have the complete audit of the, uh, of the calendar year. That's just.
We haven't done, we're not done.
Sorry, guys. Um, my name's Debbie McDonald and I think last three weeks I've been here every day just about visiting Kathy Jack. Um, I'm here in regards to the flood damage, um, that my house sustained on Franklin Street. So I'm hoping that this evening I'll at least have a call or an email or some type of correspondence from counselor, city manager in regards to my claim, which unfortunately is over $100,000. Um, I had a complete finished basement that sustained significant damage, uh, May. Can you hear me okay? May and July. So, um, the home I live in, my husband, my deceased husband's family owned that for about 75 years and it never had a basement flood. So, um, thankfully I was able to employ Mayor Skelly to put back flow. Um, valid in that, I have yet to make payment on his bill, so please don't take me to collections like the other ones are going to do. So I'm just pleased, um, requesting that some type of correspondence Kathy has seen my face every day down here. If someone could have just at least reached out to me the last three weeks and updated me, um, in regards to my claim. That way I know if I need to take it to the next step. So, so tonight you are discussing that and, okay. Now, when you leave, if this hasn't, this will be decided tonight, my claim? Is that, is that what I'm thinking or will there be a risk?
I didn't even know this was going on in executive session tonight, so this is, tonight's the first.
Well, I just happened to see on the agenda, no one called me to let me know that this was gonna be on. And I've been here every day just wondering for an update. So I apologize, it's a bad time, budget, personnel issues, everything's a mess here in Augsburg.
Have you made a claim to your own insurance?
Um, I contacted my, it wasn't, there were no pipes burst inside my home. Um, you know, the city employees, DPW were excellent, bringing a camera in. I requested an engineer to come. The city engineer didn't show up. I asked the insurance company for the city to send me a jester, at least look at the damage. I don't know if you've seen the videos, my basement destroyed pictures, I'm sure. So I don't see how this could be an act of God when there's sewage stuff in my basement twice. So, and Mr., you know, uh, Mr. Scampaly came down, saw my basement. So anyways, please just get ahold of me so I can make a decision on what to do next. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Will Shane also be in that executive session?
At this point, it wouldn't be appropriate.
Well, if we're discussing that, I'd be interested in his viewpoint on things as well. That'd be my.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'd like to hear that.
So.
Anybody, anybody online?
We haven't done, we haven't done discussion online.
I do not see any hands raised.
Uh, do we have to actually read the reason for executive session, Kathy?
I'll second it.
Noted on the agenda, so I think we're okay.
Counselor Raish?
Yes.
Counselor Scampaly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Counselor Delaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
All in favor?
Aye.